Service Committee to order at six thirty, members president of my committee is Council Tavoras and Council Waterman. I have two speakers, Scott McDougall for Traffic Studies, come on up.
My name is Scott McDougall. I am from six Greenfield Street. I want to thank everybody tonight for considering me for the confirmation to the Traffic Studies Commission. I would like to thank Mayor DeSimone for the appointment and entrusting me in that position. And I would also like to thank Council Waterman, Council Foyer, and also former Council Bennett, who actually encouraged me to look for this position and be more involved. I'd just like to take a minute or two to introduce myself, answer some questions if you have any at the end. My wife and I have been married for about twenty-six and a half years. We have two four-legged feline kids. And we moved here, we built a house in 2019, and we moved to the city. And we spent a lot of time looking for a good opportunity, and we really liked Attleboro. And I've become more, hopefully more engaged in the city. At the end of 2023, I also was selected as part of the election inspection inspector. Haven't been called for that yet, but I'm on the roster. You know, my professional background, I spent twenty-three years at Raytheon. I started off in the Controllers Organization. And I grew up throughout that, from budgets and planning to taxation. And then I moved over to the IT group and became the project manager for that. And I had since left Raytheon, and I am now with, as a federal contractor with the US EPA in Narragansett, Rhode Island. I've been there for about ten years now. I'm the site lead. I'm also the IT contract manager in a Windows system admin. I understand that that's a little light on the technical background, but I believe my strong communication skills and diverse perspective, the proven ability to ask insightful questions would make me a valuable asset to this commission. Throughout my career, I've consistently navigated complex situations by actively listening and seeking out solutions for the benefit of all the stakeholders. I'm confident that my ability to facilitate constructive dialogue and identify potential roadblocks would contribute significantly to the success of the commission. I did attend the TSC meeting, I think September, just as a citizen, popping in to see what it was all about. And I have to admit, they were unbelievably welcoming. They didn't have a chip on their shoulder because there was some guy in the corner. They were all very professional, addressing all the agendas. And it actually made me feel that I actually wanted to step up and become more involved. Just the way that they handled everything professionally and just handled everything professionally and just, they had fun, too. It wasn't just all dry. As I mentioned, I moved here in 2019, and I'm actively looking to become involved in Attleboro and its success as we go forward. And that's pretty much me.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. You know, obviously, you've got a lot of experience in IT, and it definitely takes a lot of thinking, a lot of, you know, management and management skills and everything. So I'm looking forward to being on this commission because I'm pretty sure we can use some assistance there to help. Questions, councilors?
I've got a couple of questions. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Scott, thanks for being willing to serve.
Well, thank you.
And thanks for coming down this evening. I've got a couple of questions. My first is, what do you see as the most significant traffic challenges that face the city right now?
Speed. Speed. I'm on the corner of Greenfield itself, and it's a, it's a raceway. But then you come down further on the other side of ninety-five, heading into the city. Speed along that whole stretch. Then you turn around and get up one fifty-two. It's speed everywhere. I know that there's some, I'm still becoming familiar with the street names because of the H off of one fifty-two. Very high speeds on that road as well. The one that ends up by Walgreens?
Holden.
Thank you. Yeah, Holden. Speed. And I, and I think the lack of the MBTA right now, having full service in all the traffic in downtown, that is absolutely an issue I see. But yeah, speed by far.
So my follow-up to that would be, what would be your top priorities for improving traffic flow, speed, things of that nature?
Well, that would be with the, you know, the laws that are on the books right now in the consulting with the other commission members. Being the new guy, I'm not going to pretend I have all the solutions and all the ideas right now. My wife has vetoed a turret on the end of my driveway for people turning around, so I know we can't do that. Liability is probably not that great. But give me time. Give me about six months, and I'll come back and have a much better answer for you. Because right now, I don't want to come up here and pretend I know all the answers. I'm going to lean on their expertise, but also, you know, put my nose to the grindstone and just learn. And I can come back in six months with a much better answer. I'm not afraid to say I don't know. I think that's a fool that will sit up here and say, yep, got it. So hopefully, that answered your question.
Thank you.
While dodging it.
President Delisio next, but I couldn't agree with you more than that.
Yeah, so Scott, nice to see you.
Thank you.
I know we've met a couple of times. I was very excited when I saw your name come down for this board and commission.
Thank you.
As you know, I've been on, involved in several email communications and other issues with you, Representative Hawkins, former Council Bennett. You have an understanding of how this works and how this should work. I think your background is going to bode very well, so I just wanted to say welcome and thank you for putting your name in there.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Council Waterman?
I just want to say I'm delighted that you're joining us. Is there anything else that you want to add that you haven't added yet?
That's an open-ended question. I can babble. You two both know I can babble, so just keep me reined in. But no, I, I'm excited to be part of this and learn and become engaged and hopefully have a long life on that commission and help the city succeed.
All right, great. Well, thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. And we talked earlier, so you know what's coming next.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Stephanie? Stephanie Elliott is to fill an expired term on the planning board. Welcome back, Stephanie.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Elliott, sixty Brownell Street, Attleboro. And I am currently serving as the Chair of the Council on Human Rights. My wish to join the planning board is born from a desire to increase my involvement in my community. I'm so proud to have this appointment and be considered for this opportunity. We first moved here in 2016. I moved here sight unseen. My husband found us an apartment. He had gotten a job transfer. And we arrived in the middle of the night with two very tired toddlers. And the next morning, while waiting for the moving truck, we looked for somewhere to go eat with two tired toddlers. And I was driving through downtown going, where are we? Because I saw empty storefronts, I saw rundown parking lots, overgrown lots, empty buildings. And we were at a diner, couldn't even eat because the children were not behaving or they were just crying their heads off. And two people were sitting next to us, and they were like, it's okay. You don't have to leave. Where are you from? Why, you know? And we're like, we just got here at midnight. We're so tired. We're so sorry. We're leaving. We're leaving. And they're like, it's all right. Welcome to town. You're going to love it here. And the, and we didn't have to go. Like, we fed the kids, we, you know, the, the people were so nice. They were like, you're going to love the zoo, you're going to love the museums. And that's what happened. The schools are great. We were so happy here, we bought a house in 2018. And in those years, I've watched the city grow so beautifully. The stores are being filled, the lots are being cleaned up, empty buildings being renovated and turned into housing, and the hospital investing in the area around it. And so I would love to be, I want to be a part of the choices that are being made. I'm so thrilled at the opportunities, for example, that my children will have. They're currently in Wamsata, and they're going to be in the high school very soon. And I'm so delighted at the chances that they're going to have, being, being able to attend our high school. So I want to be a part of those choices. I want to be a part of the decisions that are being made that will affect the city, the residents now and in the future, from new development to renovations, you know, to existing structures, preservation and updates to infrastructure, which are so important. I do have experience with public service. I've been on the ACHR for a couple of years. I've chaired it for one year. I do have experience with blueprints, construction, large-scale projects. I was in admin support for a commercial design and furniture company for many years. And our customers were hospital systems, universities, and government contractors. So these weren't just like small executive suites where the person wanted a new desk and a new chair. These were entire buildings, start from broken ground all the way up, multiple levels, hundreds of workstations, executive suites, conference rooms, and I provided support for logistics, the design department, all of that stuff. So I'm familiar with all of that. I've also been related to tradespeople and around tradespeople my whole life, so I understand kind of the lifestyle of a carpenter, a mason, an electrician. So I have that perspective as well. And my only goal or agenda in joining the planning board is to be as objective as possible, carefully consider every project that's brought before the board, and make the best decision I can based on current guidelines, ordinances, zoning regulations, and so forth.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate it very much. I was actually exhausted just reading your resume.
[laughing]
You know, and obviously, pretty impressive with, you know, publishing books as well, too. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And so, questions, councilors?
They don't, I just did a comment. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Stephanie, I'm so excited that you want to keep on giving yourself to the city. And hearing all of that, you know, he said, it's exhausting to hear all the stuff you did, and it's a great fit for you, you know, knowing you fairly well after leaving you at the ACHR and as president. I think you're going to do very well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, well, thanks. And councilors?
Well, I'm very happy that you're going to be doing this myself. You're going to do it, not me. But what concerns and issues do you think the planning board may have overlooked that you feel is important? That's a tough question, so.
That is a tough question. I did attend a meeting, and I've spoken at length with Gary Arashin. But I wouldn't say overlooked is the word I would use.
Use your own word.
In my conversation with him, he was very careful to emphasize that every project is given the same amount of consideration. And everything, you're expected to just look at it as objectively as possible because all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed beforehand. All the permits need to be done, as long as everything meets regulations and zoning guidelines and everything, then, you know, you're basically presented a package. He doesn't want anything rushed through. He doesn't want anything, there's no favors done. And I'm like, that kind of efficiency and adherence to guidelines is amazing. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say overlooked.
Yeah, thank you. President Delisio?
Yes, Stephanie, very impressive. Your resume impressive, but what really impressed me is when you said your only goal is to be objectionable and base.
No.
It's been a long day. Long, long day, but thank you. Script is there. But, you know, I think that's important when you talk about it, you know, being based on the ordinances and the regulations. Then you went on to talk about how you've gone to a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. And then you said, I've talked to Gary. So, you know, you, just like Scott before, you go into meetings, doing your homework. You know, I think you're going to bring a lot. This is really exciting. So thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
And thank you for my full part.
Council Tavoras?
Thanks for coming down, Stephanie. I appreciate it. So thinking through a couple of questions here. The first one that sort of came to mind, and maybe after talking with Gary, maybe that brought some, some perspective, but I'm curious, what, what do you believe is the most, or maybe in a list of some of the most pressing planning issues facing the city, sort of, long-term?
Well, we all know that we're under a severe drought, obviously. So I know the water meeting right now is standing room only. So I'm sure that passions are going to be really high in that room. And I imagine that resources, we are bringing all these new homes in, bringing in all these new families with all, like, the mills and the new apartments. And I imagine that that's going to be a point of contention at that meeting tonight. My concern would be the aging infrastructure and like, things like rainwater abatement. So right now, in a drought, rainwater abatement is not such a big deal. But one of the projects that we're currently under consideration is a mobile home park. And their solution for rainwater abatement was to put in depressions in the soil to give the water somewhere to go. And that seems, I would have had more questions about that. Because if it was a $400,000 home, I don't think the people would be content with a hole in their yard to catch rainwater. And there are ways that you can put in like, water gardens, plant dogwoods, hydrangeas, alders, cypress trees, to, to make an environment, like a new neighborhood or renovated neighborhood, be visually appealing, as well as dealing with standing water from the rain. Because we do have a lot of wetlands that is under consideration for encroachment and new development. We need somewhere for the water to go. So that would, that was one question I had when I was at the meeting, which I would have asked if I was already appointed to the board.
Last one, more questions?
Sure.
Do you support a moratorium on new construction?
I could not say that I would do that at all because there are so many buildings that require updating. And so if it's necessary for a building to come down and possibly be replaced, that is new construction. I don't have a universal rule that I'm going to follow. I would consider each project as presented. I wouldn't support a moratorium on anything. I'd be open to anything that was brought up, if it was brought up with the best interests of the city in mind, for sure.
All right, great. Well, thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate it very much.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
All right. From the docket of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, in motion accept Massachusetts General Law fifty-nine, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause twenty-two I.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavoras. All right. So this is part of the HERO Act, and it's a, it's an option that Director of Veterans Services Ben Corlin, Chief Assessor Julie Hobson decided that this was the best option to go with the twenty-two I. They had, there were different options to go with, but this is going to allow us to increase the benefit annually for the veterans off of the taxes while remaining financially prudent for the city. Among the considerations were the unknown impact of the changes made in the HERO Act will have on other number of exemptions granted in the future years, and the fact that under a local option, any additional amounts granted under each exemption fall solely on the city. For these reasons, the incremental increase is the most practical way to implement the increase in the exemption, exemption amount. In addition, adjusting the exemption amount each year by the cost of living adjustment is in line with the way most veteran benefits are currently determined. So this is helping the veterans get a, help with the taxes as well, too. And it also doesn't put the city in a bad position as well. Any questions?
All right. Just a comment. I mean, anything that we can do to alleviate the burden on our veterans to... I mean, anything that we can do to um, I think alleviate the burden on our veterans to um to be able to live in the city, I think is is a step forward, so I definitely um in agreement with this.
Absolutely. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. From the docket of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, entertain a motion to approve the inter-municipal agreement to formally join the Northern Bristol County Public Health Alliance.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. So um, basically, this is um the uh, a regional staff that's gonna help fund um training. Uh, it's gonna be six cities. It's gonna be Ton, North Arrow, Dian, Rehoboth, and Berkeley. Um, and it's gonna be um, it's gonna be staffed uh through Berkeley. It's gonna be no cost to the city, and um, and it's certainly gonna help um uh funds and training to help this uh, the health department be able to better assist uh the citizens around here and not be a burden cost-wise to the city as well. So this is, I think this is a very good thing uh for the city. And um, and like I said, it's gonna be staffing is gonna be hired through uh Berkeley, so we don't even have to worry about that either. So it's gonna be, basically, it's gonna be a regional staff inspector nurse that's gonna help uh handle the things that we need to handle. Any questions?
So in what way will they be interacting, do you imagine anyways, between our health department?
Well, I talked to Dan, and basically, um, it's, there's not an exact, um, I think it's basically, um, it's gonna be helping the residents of the city. So whatever they might need, and it gives us an additional nurse that will be on call to be able to help out with things that we might need.
Great.
Yeah.
Mike.
Yes, sir.
I can't through Council Waterman. Uh, last week, the actual agreement is in the backup documentation. So I think it does a nice job of really illustrating and spelling out what it is. Um, it's actually a pretty interesting read, so if you haven't, I would highly recommend you take a look at that.
Thank you, President Lucio. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. For the docket of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, entertain a motion to appoint Scott McDougall, six Greenfield Street, to fill an unexpired term on the Traffic Safety Commission, turn to expire February twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. So we just heard from uh Scott, obviously, uh, he, I think he's got the right attitude, and I think he's gonna be doing a great job. And um, so, and um, any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three nothing. For the docket of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Elliott, sixty, Brownell Street, to fill an expired term on the planning board, turn to expire February twenty twenty-nine.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. Um, as we just obviously heard from Stephanie as well too, she's gonna be a great addition to the planning board. Comes with the right attitude, she has a lot of knowledge, and I think she'll be great. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three nothing. That's all for Personnel, Veterans, and New Services Committee. Call for a meeting at next appropriate time.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three zero, are we adjourned at six fifty-two? Um, with everybody's okay, I am gonna handle the compensation classification uh meeting, and then we can continue on on our normal law path. All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate that very much. Um, call to order officially the Special Committee on Compensation Compensation at six fifty-two. All right, councilors present is uh myself, Council Tavares, and Councilor Reynolds. All right, um, from the docket of October first, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to approve the proposed amendments to section thirteen dash three dash one of the revised ordinances of the city, Adderboro City Ordances. Thank you, Council Tavares. Um, so we we had, we had our meetings, we had the public hearing, we had our meetings, and um, though nothing is perfect, but I think this is gonna be very well for a lot of the employees in the city. Uh, and also, this is gonna be a fiscally, financially prudent uh for the city as well. And um, and and this is gonna be for all three that I'm gonna speak as. Um, is uh, this is, I think this is really gonna, um, it's gonna help, you know, some correcting some of the salaries that really needed help with. And uh, this should um kinda get us in line where they really need to be. Um, and like I said, um, you know, we'll 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 need to review this and make sure that everything is working and coming along. And and um, and we'll keep a, you know, we'll keep a communication open with the administration and making sure that um this is benefiting, uh, you know, the three things, the administration, um, the the city residents, and also the city employees, which is all very important. Uh, but I I think um this is a good start, and um, and this gets us heading in the right uh, right direction. Any questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. For the docket of October first, twenty twenty-four, entertain a motion to adopt the amended compensation plan pursuant to section thirteen dash four dash one of the revised ordinance of the city of Adderboro.
Second.
Thank you, um, Councilor Reynolds. Um, so I'm gonna, um, we're gonna vote on this, and then I'm gonna have an amendment, and we're gonna vote on that. Um, and this, basically, my comments are from.
Point of order. If you have a, an amendment, you have to, you can't vote on this, 'cause once you vote on that before the amendment, then that's it. So what I would do is, it's, the motion's in order, you can make your comments, and then you can um
Read the amendment.
Move to make an amendment, get that seconded, and then have discussion on the amendment.
Thank you for that, President Lucio. All right, so um.
Do you want me to remove my second?
No, you need the second in order to have the motion in order, so we can have discussion. So had, um, I'm sorry, Councilor Angelo, if you mind. So had we voted on it as is, it stands as is. So we wouldn't be able to discuss an amendment. The motion's in order, so now we can, Michael can entertain the motion for the amendment, second it. We would then have discussion on the amendment, then vote on the amendment. And if the amendment votes, I mean, um, fails, then we go back to the motion as Michael just, uh, to the motion as Michael just read. If it's accepted, it's now the motion as amended.
So I'm gonna amend it, I'm just gonna say I'm gonna amend the motion, and then we're going.
You're gonna entertain a motion to make an amendment. Someone will, you'll read it, someone will second it, you'll discuss it, and open that for others for discussion.
Okay, entertain a motion to amend section thirteen dash four, point four. In the event an employee is promoted to another position on the classification plan, they shall accept as is otherwise provided herein, be paid at the minimum salary in the salary range for the grade for a position to which they are being promoted, or a salary which provides them no less than seven point five percent increase in compensation for the salary they were paid in position from which they were promoted. Notwithstanding the foregoing provisions, an employee being promoted may, with the approval of the mayor or with the approval of the municipal council, in the case of those positions for which the council is in appointing authority, be paid a salary above the minimum salary for the salary range for the position to which they're being promoted, which is higher than that provided for herein when the qualifications of the employee warrant promotions at a higher rate pay.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tavares. So basically, it originally was just an error that came down as ten percent, and this is correcting it to seven point five percent. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero.
So now, Michael, you're gonna go to the motion as amended, and then open that up for discussion if there is, 'cause right now, it's still the, I entertain the motion to adopt the amended compensation plan pursuant to blah blah blah, as you read it. But now this gives people uh additional opportunity to discuss.
All right. So I entertain a motion to adopt the amended compensation plan pursuant to thirteen dash four dash one of the revised ordinances of the city of Adderboro.
As amended.
As amended. Any uh?
Second.
Second. Uh, all right. Council Reynolds, thank you very much. Uh, any questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, for the docket of October first, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to adopt a new compensation plan for publicly elected officials pursuant to section thirteen dash five of the revised ordinances of the city of Adderboro.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. So I am gonna do an amendment on this. And I entertain a motion to amend the school committee to be paid seventy-five percent of the city council.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. Any questions, comments, concerns?
This would probably be a good opportunity for you to discuss what it is exactly that you're doing.
Okay, all right. All right, so basically, this is um getting the school committee in line. Um, a couple of years ago, we really didn't have what we needed to actually get the school committee to where they needed to be. Um, a lot of information came down, it was very thorough. Um, and this is, it's gonna put them to where they should rightfully be compensated. And um, it would be in at seventy-five percent. And I fully support this, and I think this is uh correcting all of that. Any questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. That's um, that's all.
Nope, you have to, that was the amendment, so now you have to vote on it. You don't need the second, 'cause it's already been seconded.
Yep.
So now you just um want to move back to the motion as amended, see if anyone has questions, comments, concerns.
All right. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to adopt or?
You just, back to the emotion as, uh, back to the motion as amended.
Okay. Um, not as, am I reading?
Just say back to the motion as amended.
Back to the motion as amended. Um, all those in favor?
Nope, I'm sorry. So, um, thank you, everyone, for the work, and I know this, this is kind of a sensitive subject where um, we're elected officials. I did talk with the city solicitor this evening. I asked him if he could get us an opinion um for this for next Tuesday. He said he will have that as well, based on some of the conversations that he's also had with other state officials, um, which I think will bring a lot of us some peace of mind on this. So just wanted to make sure that we set that on the floor at an appropriate time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
And and President Lucio, that will be distributed to all of us before the meeting on Tuesday.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. That's all for the Special Committee on Classification and Compensation. I call for an adjournment at seven oh one. Thank you, Councilor Tavares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero, we are adjourned.
Seven oh one.
All right. Call the Finance Committee to order at seven oh one. Me and myself, Council Reynolds, and Council Tavares. Three items tonight, from the docket of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. I entertain a motion to transfer two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents from account one six one zero one zero 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 dash five one one zero zero zero, library salaries, to account one six one zero one zero 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 dash five one four zero three seven, library prior year earned time payout.
Second.
Motion's in order. It's a um, earned time payout for retirement and contractually obligated. Any questions?
I have none.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to transfer nine hundred and fifty-five dollars from account one five one zero one zero 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 dash five three zero one zero one, health professional services to account one five one zero one zero 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 dash five seven eight zero two zero, health bills from previous year.
Second.
Uh, so a previous year bill. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to transfer five hundred dollars from account one one two four one zero 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 dash five seven eight zero three zero, citywide reserve fund for transfer to account one five one zero one zero 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 dash five seven one zero one zero, health in-state travel.
Second.
Motion's in order, um. I had some concerns with this one a little bit, but uh, I'm going to encourage us to approve it. This is, it's to transfer five hundred dollars over for in-state travel. The health department does have their own vehicles, but this is to, and and there's only, they only need a hundred dollars for this one particular travel because the the health department vehicles were were busy on this particular day. Uh, and this would reserve an additional four hundred dollars for days when the health department vehicles are busy and and they need in-state travel. Uh, I think that's fine, um, but if it's something that happens a lot, then may, then maybe it it'll be a concern. But I think for five hundred dollars, I'm I'm not overly concerned about it. President Lucio.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. I think um this kind of scrutiny in the landscape herein is important, so I thank you for that. I just think it's also just to add, if I may, these were state mandated train, um, state mandated trainings that had to get done, so.
It it is state mandated, a hundred percent, yes.
Yep, thank you.
Yep. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. That concludes business for the Finance Committee. I move to adjourn at seven oh four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned at seven oh four.
The IT and Infrastructure Committee meeting for tonight is canceled. Uh, as well, the Special Committee on Rules and Regulations uh is also canceled.
I'd like to call to order the License Committee at seven oh five. Uh, beside me tonight is Council Waterman. I'm gonna skip around a little, 'cause there's only a few of these I've been to so far, so bear with me on that. From, from the docket of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, entertain a motion to approve the following class one rural application for Chevrolet Buick of GMC of Adderboro at one oh three Washington Street with eighty-four customer spaces and two hundred and eighty-eight display spaces.
Second.
Thank you, motion's in order. Uh, everything checked out here. Um, they've obviously been in business for quite some time, and uh, everything looks good. Uh, President Lucio.
Thank you. So first of all, I appreciate your wisdom, which you're attacking these and not just voting them out until you have a chance, especially being a freshman council, so well done. Um, is your plan to get these all reviewed and voted out by the end of the year?
Absolutely. Um, so I'll probably have a good majority of these done next week, obviously with a newborn. Uh, took a little time this week, so I've gotten to a few of them, and that will be coming up. There's a couple of these I wanted to go to.
Sure.
Um, which are why they're gonna come out tonight. Some of the smaller ones, you know, like the arcades, things like that, those are kinda easier to verify.
Yep.
Um, but in particular, one dealership I'll bring out tonight. There was a reason why I chose to do it promptly. Um, aside from that, yeah, everything will be out in time, probably fairly quickly.
Good. Nice work.
Thank you. Uh, all right, any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, I entertain a motion to approve the following two class two renewal applications from Adderboro Auto Clinic LLC at forty-two County Street with ten customer spaces and twenty-eight display spaces, and one hundred percent auto wholesalers located at twenty-one Washington Street with ten customer spaces and forty-eight display spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so one of these, uh, we're pretty familiar with, pretty fresh. That's Adderboro Auto Clinic at forty-two County. Um, this is a renewal. The lot's entirely empty. They actually just put up gates as they're gonna start renovations, so that's pretty exciting. Um, and I appreciate them investing the money into Adderboro, um, getting that property up to par. Uh, the other one I brought up was a hundred percent auto wholesalers. Um, I know that one is one that's had some trouble in the past. Um, I do feel, in terms of two thousand and twenty-four, I think they've made efforts to ride that track. Um, and that's why I wanted to bring them out promptly. Um, they had two issues this year, both of which, in my mindset, they handled with flying colors. Um, one of which came through with Council Angelo. The other actually was something that they had no, they didn't have to cover at all. Um, it was something well out of warranty, um, something that was pretty minor in terms of what would even have grounds for as a warranty. Um, but they still offered to give that family some money. Um, that's not anything out of my end, nothing I encouraged or anything like that. They just had offered to the family. The family reached out to me, they were very happy with that. Um, and I am cautiously confident and optimistic that they'll be able to keep this up and and kinda show what proper government can do on the private sector. You know, not being overbearing, but, you know, encouraging them and and putting forth some nudges to get them to act appropriately. Um, so like I said, twenty twenty-four, I'm very happy with how they've been. I don't wanna make any promises for how they'll be in twenty-five, but I do feel that they deserve the approval for this renewal. Council Angelo.
Thank you, Council of All. Um, yeah, and and I appreciate your words, and um, and and I was, had gotten involved a little bit. And um, and and they were, uh, no issues with getting back to me and talking and meeting with us, and even on a Sunday. And um, and and they did go above and beyond. He ended up uh later selling the vehicle. He ended up, uh, later selling the vehicle, because there was just, ended up being other issues, uh, but for, I was very satisfied with how he took care of it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
No, I'm very pleased to hear your, your observations, your report, and I would say that, uh, during the last period of my time as a chair, they were also, it's echoing my experience. It's like they turned a corner.
Absolutely, and, um, it, it's a good family business over there, um, so I, I feel like it's good government as well, just to be able to help some of these smaller fish in the pond, um, kinda understand how things should be and expectations. You know, they don't, obviously have big money attorneys representing them or coming before them to, to get things done, or even a simple renewal done. Um, but I think all around, the city's done a good job in making sure they're up to par and protecting the citizens of Attleboro and just consumers of Attleboro, so. Um, any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three, zero. From the docket of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, I entertain a motion to approve an amusement arcade license application from Chuck E. Cheese, two eighty-seven Washington Street, for sixty-five video games.
Second.
Thank you, motion's in order. Um, everything checked out, I didn't test the machines, I didn't wanna break them and have the city liable. But everything looks good, glad to see Chuck E. Cheese was busy when I visited, and, um, yeah, everything looked awesome. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, we have received an amusement arcade license from Post three one two, located at four thirty-seven Newport Ave, for one pool table and one jukebox.
Second.
Thank you, motion's in order. Everything checked out there as well, um, great establishment, and, uh, happy to get this done for them. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And finally, from the docket of November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, entertain a motion to approve the following class two renewal application from Trusted Auto Inc., located at sixty-four Pleasant Street, for five parking spaces and eighteen display spaces.
Second.
Thank you, um, yeah, I just happened to be able to check this one off the list, and I'm happy to be able to do this, is, this is one of the, um, places on the list that gets immense feedback from the general public. Anytime I see them in like the local groups for recommendations, they always have fantastic feedback, so, um, very promising. And everything looked in order when I was there. Any other questions, comments, concerns, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And with that, I would call for an adjournment at seven twelve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned at seven twelve. I have, uh, public safety, so.
Okay, second.
Thank you. I would like to call to order the public safety committee at seven twelve. Uh, beside me is Counsel Angelo. From the docket of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, entertain a motion to appropriate sixty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-one cents from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero zero zero, citywide, undesignated fund balance, free cash, general government, to account one two two zero one zero 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 dash five one one zero zero zero, fire salary and wages.
Second.
Thank you, motion's in order. Um, yeah, pretty straightforward, just gotta move some funds to the appropriate places to, uh, ensure that we cover our salary and wages. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Sorry?
Uh, aye.
Yeah, um, without mentioning the two names, I do want to take a second to thank both of them, um, especially, uh, the district chief for the years of service. Good friend, I don't know, Mike's familiar with both of them as well, but, uh, years of service, well deserved, and wish them all the best, so thank you.
Thank you for that, and, uh, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, just really quick, before I call for an adjournment, I just wanted to take the time to thank our fire department. I know they've been working, um, around the clock to battle brush fires, so with that, to the general public, please not have any open fires, uh, maintain and keep an eye on grills, and really just all the woods lying next to you and around you, um, obviously with the drought, challenging times. But I just couldn't open this committee without making sure that I just, um, at least showed the council's appreciation. It's, I mean, endless as of late, so, thank you. Uh, with that, I would call for an adjournment at seven fourteen.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, I'd like to call City Property and Claims Committee to order at seven fourteen. And I have only one thing on the docket this afternoon, uh, this evening. From the docket of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to declare the following as surplus and available for disposition to trade in or sell. Uh, the year is twenty fifteen, it's a Ford PI utility, the VIN number is one FM F, no, one FM five K eight AR three F G A one five nine zero seven. It has a hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight miles, and it's in poor condition. And the second one is a two hundred and fourteen Ford PI utility, the VIN number one FM five K eight AR seven E G C two six six five five. It has a hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and nine miles, and it too is in poor condition. Second. Thank you, Hamel. Um, again, uh, I, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes, and that is all the business City Property and Claims Committee has this evening. I'd like to call for an adjournment at seven fifteen. Second. Thank you. Um, uh, all those, um, no. Yeah, yeah. George, all those, all those, we are adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye. Oh my God, my brain is just wiped out, I apologize.
Sorry, I was there earlier.
I know, I apologize profusely.
I took you out of order, that's why.
Yeah, I got you. Blame it on you. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, no, go ahead. I am done. Okay. Uh, I'd like to call Public Works to order at seven sixteen, I have one motion this evening. I entertain a motion to accept a donation from technical assistance from the Massachusetts Initiative Program, MDI, to produce a downtown pedestrian access study and provide services related in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so this is, um, we had the study, MDI was where we got the grant from, and they chose Stan Tech as the consultant to provide the services related, and they've already, uh, sent the final strategies and such to the city, so I look forward to seeing that. Um, it's to improve safety and accessibility to the, uh, pedestrians in the downtown area. So we're thankful for this free assessment. Does anybody have any questions? Uh, President Lucio?
More of a comment, um, I think it's really important, so in my day job, I worked for the registry of motor vehicles, and, and we see a lot of, um, data relating to pedestrian accidents, and I think there are more and more pedestrian accidents, as there are more and more motor vehicles on the rise, so these sort of studies are really, really important, especially when you talk about the safety and accessibility for pedestrians in downtown area, because downtown tends to be the busier place, a more congested place. So, you know, kudos to Kalen, who does just an outstanding job as community engagement manager and getting these funds. Twenty-five thousand dollars for a study like this really is a lifesaver, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, it was basically a free study, so that was great, and I think it'll give us a lot of information to improve the walkers, the pedestrians', uh, safety and enjoyment of the city, so, uh, yes. Kalen always does a great job. Does anybody else have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Hamel, I assume?
Uh, aye, sorry.
Motion passes, so I'd like to call for an adjournment at seven eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, thank you.
I call Zonin Land Use Committee to order at seven eighteen. Um, and members of the committee are myself, Counsel Dolan, and Counsel Lavoy. I have one item that I want to bring out. From the docket of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to approve the request to accept the overlay for the following Mass General Law Forty A S point three A Rapid, Rapid Transit Zoning Ordinance Amendment and Approved Amendment.
Second.
Thank you, um, we had the, uh, public hearing, um, on October twenty-ninth, and we did get a certificate of vote from the planning board in our, um, in our, uh, combined, um, public hearing, and I was just, um, hoping that we would, um, approve this, um, so that we could make sure we can get all the grants that are, um, that come along with it, with the state, and, um, for this, um, zoning ordinance for the overlay and the, um, map that they had provided to us. And, um, any comments, questions about it?
You have, oh, sorry, you have the planning board's decision?
Um, well, there was a certificate of vote that was here, if you wanna, want me to pass it to you, I can.
Oh, I just, I just don't have one. Um, what was the name? What was the result of the vote?
Um, well, it says, this is to certify that the planning board meeting, um, well, it says on top, certificate of vote, but I'll read it. On Monday, October seventh, twenty twenty-four, the planning board voted unanimously in favor to petition the Honorable Mediciel Council to call for a joint public hearing, so I guess this is not their vote about the whole thing, but it looks like, because it said a certificate of vote, I was thinking this was their, their vote. Maybe it was just a, um, the way that it was written, so I don't know if we have to, we further so maybe I'll. It was just my, what I was thinking, it says their vote was to just have the joint public hearing.
Right.
Yes.
I could be wrong, but, um, and maybe President Lucio can chime in, but I, I thought they came down and did speak in favor of this, uh, but also said that, um, even though if we approve this, that doesn't obligate the city to have to actually, uh, put in the housing in there. It's just that if we accept it, we'll be able to continue to get grants, and Gary came down and spoke about it, that if we say no, we're not gonna get all these different grants, that would, they would not be available through the, uh, state.
Right, so they have the property, um, the zone, the overlay zoning, go ahead.
So, ish, kind of, right? So first of all, I think we should wait for the zoning board, um, opinion. What you read was October seventh, the public hearing was the twenty-ninth, that was just them asking us to hold that public hearing on the twenty-ninth. What, and I don't believe that the planning board has spoken in favor or against, they were here with us as part of that joint public hearing. Um, and I think that what Gary was saying is the overlay district is going to almost nullify that need for us to build more property. Um, I, I think we should wait for the planning board's decision on this before we bring it up.
Okay, I, I, just a misreading of that, I, I apologize, thank you.
Can I ask one more question before I withdraw my second? Um, did we have, did they say anything about a timeline? Because I know that they were doing something with the Union Theater, and that was tied to this. Was there a date?
Yeah.
What was the, there was, there was concern?
There wasn't a date.
And of course, I can't remember now.
Yeah.
If I'm hoping, I'm hoping one of, somebody else would remember.
I think at the end of the day, what we can do, if I may share, Sawyer,
Thank you.
is, um, perhaps tomorrow you can connect with Gary, find out exactly what that timeline is, when we're expecting that, and if we need to, you can call for a committee meeting before next week's meeting, uh, this way here, so we don't lose any time.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, thank you. And, and that concludes the business for the Zonin Land Use Committee, and I move to adjourn.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
I would call the Transportation and Traffic Committee together at seven twenty-three. I have one motion that I'll be bringing out this evening, but before I bring that up, I was invited to a meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, the mayor convened it with myself, our police chief, um, with Mike Tyler from D P W, and in this case, uh, Scott Dominici, who lives in Siana Street. And during the course of that conversation, um, Chief Hegney pretty much led off the meeting by saying that he is volunteering to handle, um, all crosswalk issues, and that he would like to be the person to approve, or not approve, I guess, crosswalks in the future. And the group that was gathered there accepted that. Uh, the reason that I was able to say I agree is because at the last traffic and transportation committee, which was, um, third Thursday in October, uh, the traffic, the, the committee made a vote and a decision on the request of the Chair, Corinna Bonifant, to not deal with crosswalk issues anymore. And during the course of that conversation, um, they revealed to me, and I didn't know this, that it's only been in the last couple of years that they have dealt with crosswalk issues. And they did not feel it was their place. The police chief was not there, so, uh, he, he made a separate offer that was, uh, decided. And, um, and I believe he is an expert, and understands those issues very well. Any thoughts, questions for that? Please, Counsel Dolan.
I would agree with that, a hundred percent. I, I think that if anybody understands the traffic and everything, it's the chief, so I would agree with that.
Okay, Counselor Fox?
I, I would agree.
Excuse me.
It's all right, close enough. I would agree as well.
My glasses, I can't quite read.
Uh, less is more, this sounds very efficient and direct, I'm very pleased with it.
Yeah. Counsel Lavoy?
Thank you, uh, I agree with this as well, I think, uh, Chief Hegney's very well-equipped, and I think especially given issues in the past where we kind of approved them and then went back on it because they weren't ADA compliant, or we couldn't pick them or report them. Um, I think this is the smartest approach, generally speaking, from what I've gathered in my almost year now, is typically we look for his approval anyway, so this just seems like we're cutting out the middleman and streamlining the process, um, to be efficient, so I approve this, I approve of this, thank you.
He also made another offer, which I have to go to him for this anyhow, so it was a no-brainer for me, that he would be the person to approve, uh, um, requests for stop signs. And, uh, I will be talking to him soon about a motion that came in, um, through you, Counsel Lavoy. And any thoughts or concerns about that, yes?
I, I think that's the way the ordinance is currently set up, is that the chief of police has that, um, authority, so. Um, Chief Hegney's been really good about understanding each intersection and does his homework to figure out what's what. So I think, uh, just the increased communication between yourself and the chief, I think will be really helpful. I think a lot of this stuff is, um, kind of is per view anyway.
So, uh, this is, this didn't happen in a meeting, it was a conversation I had this past, uh, week with Corinna Bonifant, the Chair, and I might mention she's been on, on the Traffic Study Commission for some time. Um, I asked her, just in her opinion, and this I hope will come up at the meeting next week, that the T S C holds, um, what does she feel the primary purposes are of the Traffic Study Commission? And what she said was quite clear, to study and make recommendations regarding traffic patterns and dangerous intersections, as two primary purposes. And, um, with that, I will bring out a motion from the docket of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And it's taken me a while to undertake this motion, talk about that after I read what the motion is. That the city undertake a comprehensive study of pedestrian crosswalks in the city of Attleboro for the purpose of developing consistent and safer pedestrian crosswalk design and improving pedestrian crossing to sit conditions and vehicle traffic awareness. Currently, the city has a variety of crosswalk configurations, varied striping, different signage, and signage locations. The city has invested in improving existing crosswalks in some locations with upgraded sign, lighted signage. However, in other locations, implementing much-needed crosswalk improvements has posed challenging due to current positioning. much-needed crosswalk improvements has posed challenging due to current positioning or location of these crosswalks, or lack of sidewalk landings and accessibility concerns. Additionally, the varied or lacking signage and/or faded or inconsistent markings has resulted in driver disregard of marked crosswalks in some locations. Driver distraction and speeds on city roads are a chronic difficult challenge to address to improve pedestrian crossings, even where signage and markings have been improved. The safer crossings for Attleboro pedestrians, SCAPED as in initials, initiative would provide a comprehensive review of existing crosswalks in the city to evaluate existing crosswalk striping, marking, signage, dimensions, and locations. Consideration of traffic conditions and determine needed or recommended improvements. The study should incorporate recommendations for improvements and look to recommend best practices to support redesigns where needed in future crosswalk development. The study should also examine the incorporating of new design tools to improve driver alertness and pedestrian crossing design. For example, the use of three-dimensional crosswalk painting, use of transverse rumble strips as a physical alert to drivers of approach to a crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk in areas where such measures will improve pedestrian safety throughout the city, and employ or incorporate new tools and measures not currently employed by the city. Improvements and look to recommend best practices to support redesigns where needed in future crosswalk development. The study should also examine the incorporating new design tools to improve driver alertness and pedestrian crossing design. For example, the use of three-dimensional crosswalk painting, use of transverse rumble strips as a physical alert to drivers of approaching to a pedestrian crosswalk in areas where such measures will improve pedestrian safety throughout the city, and employ or incorporate new tools and measures not currently employed by the city. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I believe we're ready to vote on this. I have had several, excuse me, Counselor Donlan.
No, go ahead. I'll listen to you, and then I have a comment. Thank you.
Uh, no, I don't mind, if you wanted to comment first.
All right. So we already, didn't the mayor, like, we already have a policy, crosswalk policy and all that, that she sent down? So I don't know if you spoke with her, because this is kind of old. This has been sitting around for quite some time. So I don't know if you met with the mayor on this, because first, typically, when this was first out, I know I spoke to Superintendent Mike Tyler. And you typically, with something like this, they would hire somebody, like specifically hire somebody over the summer to, like they did it before with signage, you know, go around the city, see where we need signage for this, this and that, and so on and so forth. Because obviously, the people that work for us full-time don't have time for that. So, and also, I don't have the new policy that the mayor wrote regarding sidewalks and such, but...
I have a copy, if you would like.
Well, I, I'm just wondering, because this is as old as it is, if you, if you discussed it with the mayor before bringing it out or anything, like, I'm...
I have.
Okay.
And, well, I've discussed it on three different occasions, starting with, I don't know, maybe last March or so. And very recently, after we held the meeting two weeks ago, I brought it up again, third time. And she, she would like this to be passed. She understands, if I heard her correctly, that we are going to need to take a look at all the crosswalks in the city. There's nothing on the books right now. We haven't hired a company or anything. But she feels strongly that we need to, to check out all the crosswalks. Okay, Counselor LeVoy.
Thank you. I could be wrong. I thought the one the mayor sent down was more geared towards ADA compliance and which crosswalks we currently have that aren't in compliance, kind of piggyback into the point I made before, where in the past, we have, we just rampantly put them where requested with no research or will or away. So I, I think that was more geared towards that from Counselor Holmes' push on having a study done in regards to compliance and things of that nature. So I think where we're talking about more preventive measures in here, it seems a bit different. So I don't necessarily see an issue with it. So I kind of agree to take it out. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, they're, they're a little different. I agree.
Um, so is this something that the study would be done by the Traffic Study Commission? I mean, that kind of makes sense.
No, I don't think so.
Or is it, or maybe a whole other committee?
I, I don't, I would be speaking for the mayor at this point. I know that she, she values this approach of studying all the crosswalks, and some of them, I'm sure, will not be considered appropriate anymore. And beyond that, I don't know what her next plans are, but she urged me to bring it out.
And then based on what you said before, but the police chief being part of the crosswalk requests and stuff, would I imagine to be a part of it or know about it? Or, I don't know, it's just, it seemed like a, we were just talking about the other crosswalk requests.
President Delisio.
You, you can answer the council's question.
Just, would the police chief be involved in that, is basically my question.
Would the police chief be involved? I would hope so. I certainly would hope so. No final decisions have been made regarding that, except that I was urged to bring this out.
So it's a new task force? I guess I'm trying to get that part, is like, a new group of people that we come together to do that?
I would presume so. I did not write this, so I can't thoroughly answer that question.
I cannot support this. The, like, who's funding the study? What's the cost associated with the study? Who's performing the study? There's a lot of, I don't know, and I think maybes. And, you know, to Counselor Sawyer's point, you know, five minutes ago, you said, Chief Hegney volunteered to take care of all the crosswalks. Now, it, this, this doesn't tell me anything. This, and, and I believe this was introduced by former Counselor Bennett. I think it's important that we do this, but what are we voting on? Like, I just don't know what the motion is that we're voting on. It's, it's, let's vote on an idea. What I would suggest, Counselor, is perhaps, if you've said you've talked to the mayor, which we have no reason to doubt that, I would go back to the mayor and take some of these questions with her. There, there's really nothing for us to vote on. Like, who's going to do the study? What does the study, what's the scope of the study? You know, will we get the results of the study back? It, there's just, this doesn't really talk about anything.
There's no details.
There, there's no details. There's, there's, it's a vision. It's a nice vision. It's a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it, it's not really telling us anything. And, and I wouldn't suggest voting this out of committee, because we're voting an idea on it.
Well, one of the reasons I did this, because I wanted to have this kind of a discussion. Otherwise, it just sits here.
Sure.
Counselor Donlan.
So I think what, what President Delisio was saying, and I, I think if you did have a discussion with the mayor, and then the mayor discussed it with Superintendent Tyler, and then they came up with, you know, if, if Mike was to tell her, yeah, we usually hire somebody for the summer, we can hire Joe Schmo, and it'll take them three months, and then the mayor could send it down. Okay, that'll cost us $25,000 for the three months or... So I think something like that, a more detailed discussion with the mayor, and then, you know, she can talk to Superintendent Tyler, and then they could send it down and be like, hey, can we have this money to do this study? You know what I mean? If, if it's important to her, like you said, she said it was. That's just, that's just my thought.
I think it's perfectly logical. Counselor Fox.
It, my comments are exactly what President Delisio said. As written here, this is, there's nothing here that we can vote on. It's, I mean, there's, there's, there isn't any funding. So my suggestion to you would be to either rewrite this as a resolution from the council to the administration, saying, we suggest you undertake a comprehensive study and send us a funding request or whatever, in, for all of these reasons, but rewrite it as a resolution from the council? And, and that would be something that we could vote on and, and support. Or I would talk to the administration and ask the mayor to send down a funding request to us to support paying for a comprehensive study. But as written, this isn't anything, we could, we can't do anything with this, right? So I, one of those two avenues would work, but I, I don't think there's anything we could do right, right, with this.
Any other thoughts? Okay, so I don't think we should hold a vote on this?
You need to have the second withdrawn then.
So, I, did I, I don't know, but...
I think I sec, I think I seconded. I, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. So with that, I close the meeting at 7:39.
Second.
Thank you. I'll hold in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes make it. I have to say aye as well.
Call ordinances, elections, and legislative matters to order at 7:40. Members of this committee, present, or myself, and Counselor Fox. From the docket of June 25th, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the following proposed amendments for consideration. That Chapter 10 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro be amended by adding the following Section 10-15, and that Section 20-2.2 entitled revenues be amended.
Second.
Thank you. So as you all know, this past summer, new public EV charging stations were installed right outside of City Hall here, in part by a generous grant. In order to regulate the terms and the rules of the charging station, along with any future charging stations in the city, we need an ordinance. So in addition to regulating the terms of use for the charging stations, in a new Section 10-15, as is proposed here, the changes would also amend Section 20-2.2, which is an existing section that's entitled revenues, to allow that the electric vehicle charging fees to be allocated to the off-street parking fund. So the city solicitor has reviewed this proposal as to form. I've reviewed the proposal, and I have no issues from my perspective moving forward, currently as it's written. Are there any questions, comments, or...?
Thank you. And I might be wrong on this, so I'd be looking for your clarification. But currently, until we pass this ordinance, the city's not seeing any of that revenue. Is that accurate?
My understanding is that the, the city does receive that, but is not able to allocate it to that off-street fund, because currently, it doesn't include electric vehicle parking fees as, as contemplated in that specific ordinance, which is why we have to change two sections.
Okay.
Which is why I called out that 20-2.2, because it's kind of hidden at the end. But that's a good point, because I, I did have that question as well.
Yep. All right, thank you. And, and I too read the, well, I talked to Peter about it. I think it's, it's the right move.
Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most of you passes. From the docket of June 18th, 2024, I entertain a motion to amend Chapter 12 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro by adding the following subsection, 12-7, protection of public trees.
Second.
Motion is in order. I move to amend the motion as follows. Number one, add the defined term diameter at breast height. Number two, add the defined term public weigh. And number three, add the following clause to 12-7.6, planting trees of letting the layout, which shall read, "Once planted, ownership of these trees will remain with the property owner, who shall be responsible for their ongoing maintenance and care."
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Okay, so as you all may recall from the hearing, Superintendent Corso explained that the purpose of this proposed ordinance is to codify the existing practices of the city for the management of public trees. Among other requirements, which Derek informed us are already in place, specifically creating a tree care ordinance will allow the city to apply to become a Tree City USA community under the Arbor Day Foundation. That will open up grant opportunities for the city. I've reviewed the proposed ordinance with the city solicitor, city planner, and with Derek, and I, I'm satisfied with its substance. However, I thought it would be prudent to, to add a couple of things. So part of this, the reason for this amendment is I thought it was important to add two defined terms, as I mentioned earlier, diameter at, at breast height, which seems oddly specific. But the addition of this defined term, which is a technical measurement, and the tree industry is, is used in the ordinance, although it's a standard measurement, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I think it's a definition that's important for, for clarity. And actually, the state in their guidance, DCR, they actually suggest that cities and towns actually include that as a definition in their ordinances. So I thought that was a good need to follow. And secondly, is the addition of the defined term public weigh. Again, I think this is pretty well understood in, in municipal government. But again, I think it's, it's important for sake of clarity to define what a public weigh is for purposes of understanding how it's used in the ordinance. So those are, both of those definitions are actually recommended for inclusion in local tree ordinances by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And then the third, the third item that I mentioned is the additional clause to 12-7.6. So MGL, Chapter 87, Section 7, allows the tree warden to plant a tree within 20 feet of a public weigh on private property with the consent of the owner, which is what 12-7.6 as written says. But this section, however, isn't clear about the ownership and responsibility for maintaining such trees. So this is actually something that I followed up with Derek on. And after speaking with him, the intention is that the trees planted under this provision are really intended to be owned and maintained by the property owner. I looked at several other ordinances in other cities and towns that had these sorts of provisions. And, and some had a sort of lead-up where the, the city or the town sort of maintains the, the trees and is responsible for, for the trees for a certain period of time. Maybe it's a year, two years, and then they hand it over to the owner. Derek was pretty clear that the intention here was really to pass that on to the, the property owner as soon as it's, as it's planted. So I, I thought it was important so that there's no confusion over who's responsible for the trees, to include just that one sentence there at the end. So I've added that for, for queries, for purposes of clarity. Any questions, comments, concerns, amendment?
Uh, thanks, Counselor Vars. Being the fact that I've done landscaping since I was very, very young, just as long as the city is specific to the homeowner that, okay, this is the amount of time that we're going to take care of it, and you're going to be responsible for it after that. Because if the city is putting a tree on, you know, private property, and it's sometimes, you know, you could have roots that are getting in the way of septic lines, or city sewer lines, or water lines, or, or trees or branches hanging over people's property that are, you know, animals are crawling into their property and stuff. Just as long as this, the homeowner fully understands, you know, when they're going to be taking care of this and how they're going to have to make sure they take care of it. Really, as long as, I'm okay with, as long as they have that full understanding and it's just not thrown in there and nothing is said, I'm, I'm good with it.
Sure. And to be clear, the request would be coming from the city to plant these trees. So presumably, the, the tree warden would have probably looked at all of those potential issues before proposing a tree be planted in some specific location, before even approaching the, the property owner, I would think. But then, secondly, I agree with you. And I, I think the addition of, of this sentence to make clear that the ownership and responsibility for the trees are, are the property owner from the day it's planted, I think eliminates all of those issues. Because I think when, when you have a situation where, you know, the city owns it, you know, up until a certain point, and then transfers it over to the, to the homeowner, it's, I think, I, I don't see the need for that. And honestly, I didn't press Derek on the issue. To me, it made sense that from the get-go, it's the, it's the homeowner's responsibility. Again, you, you do have to get their consent anyway. So I think that process in and of itself will, will help play out a lot of those things. in and of itself will, will help play out a lot of those things. Counselor Lavoie?
Thank you. Um, for the most part, I, I agree with this. The only thing I guess I caution on the behalf of homeowners would be, any directly impacted neighbor would approve of the tree planting as well. The reason for that is, uh, Massachusetts is the only state in the Commonwealth where if a tree falls on your property, you own the tree, for whatever reason. Unless the homeowner sends certified notice to the property owner to take care of the trees, or that they're not liable for that specific tree. Don't ask me why, it's the only state in the nation that follows that guideline. Um, I know that from doing tree work, but with that being said, that's really the only reason. I understand that it's probably, hopefully, never going to happen, um, but I think if we're putting it anywhere near somewhere that could be impacted, maybe we should get their approval too. If not, I, I think I'm fine with it either way, but I don't think it would hurt to put in there. Thank you.
And just to be clear, that, this, this tracks with what state law says anyway, but to your point, I think that would probably be a prudent practice, uh, by the tree warden, so I, I think it's a good point. Uh, Counselor Foan, Counselor Dolan?
Uh, I apologize, but I don't seem to have the definitions that you described in 12 dash 6, but you have them.
I, I, sorry. I probably should have mentioned that there, there should have been a copy of the proposed amendment in everyone's box.
Well, the, I have the 12 dash 7, but the definitions that you started with, I thought they were in 12 dash 6.
I think 12 dash 7.2.
Oh, .6. Okay, let me just look at that. Well, that's what we were just discussing.
Yes.
What was the issue about chest height or?
Yeah, so these, these are the two definitions that I proposed, so they're not in the original motion.
I see.
Diameter at breast height and public weigh.
And where is that? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have the most.
7.2, under definitions.
Okay. I, I just need to read this more carefully.
No, no worries. Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm sorry, is Counselor Foan done?
I think so.
Are you all set?
I am, I am set. I need a more current version of the amendment than what I have here.
Yeah, I don't think I.
Did he give you mine?
I, I, I gave her mine.
And you don't have it either?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Of course. Um, now I, now I, now I think I might, I might have forgotten my question. Um, if I may, I just wanted to clarify with Counselor Lavoie, what, what you, yeah, I know, it says definitions, but where does it say breast height and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Where I'm, where I'm marking.
12, 7.2.
Yeah, and the first marking I made is a breast height.
Yeah, I don't have that, mine is different.
The one that was in our package didn't have that.
Right, I understand. So if I may, may I clarify what Counselor Lavoie said? You, what did you say about, so if, if the tree warden was to plant a tree on my property, you're saying that they should get permission of my neighbor?
Correct.
As well?
Yes. Um, and reasoning would be if we're neighbors, and they plant a tree along the fence line on your property, and it falls onto my fence and onto my property, I am responsible to fix my fence, cut up the tree, and if it were to hit your shed too, I have to also fix your shed.
Right.
So it's a weird gray area with Mass law.
I would feel like that would be.
Um, but it's the only state in the Commonwealth to do that. I mean, not in the nation, I want to do that.
No, and I understand why you're saying what you're saying, I just didn't get, because like, if I was going to plant a tree right now, I wouldn't ask anybody's permission. You know what I expect anybody to ask if I was, if it was going to be on my property or their property? Anyway, but I, I'm all set. Thank you.
Yeah, and I agree, Counselor Dolan, it's not, and I'm not sure if this is being suggested. I, I probably wouldn't suggest adding that to the ordinance, but as a matter of practice, I think it makes sense. But it's very, it's very driven by the facts and circumstances of the, of the situation, right? I mean, to Counselor Lavoie's point, if you're planting it within, I don't know, 10 feet, right, or less of someone's property line, then maybe that's a consideration that would be, uh, prudent to look at, um, I mean.
Right, and then people move and, you know, you get somebody's, you know, but I was just asking for clarification, I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly.
Sure, yeah, but I would trust our tree warden and their judgment.
Yeah, and I don't, I'll make a copy of this, because I was completely lost when you were first speaking, and I was like, I don't see any of these words here.
I apologize, and I probably should have made clear that that was, should have been in everyone's box, at least not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it.
I, I did have one.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to take up so much time.
Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
So the amendment passes, so now we'll vote on the motion as amended. Any questions on that, comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. And I move to adjourn at 7:54.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will cancel the special committee on tax debate.